The meeting is now called to order. Roll call, Secretary Shapiro.
All board members are present and accounted for.
Thank you, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda is our presentations, and tonight we have a spotlight on excellence for a medical emergency that occurred at the high school. Mr. Woodward.
Thank you so much. Can you hear me now? Okay, thank you. On December 6th, around 8:00 a.m., a visiting service technician experienced a medical emergency at Carmel High School. Staff responded immediately, ultimately using the AED at the school to save this man's life that day. We're here to honor that group of individuals, and I'll say that team of individuals because that's how they acted that day. They acted like a team. They responded so quickly, and everyone stepped up to assist. And when you think of a crisis in a response like this, you often think about the person who attached the AED and did the compressions. But a true crisis response is more than that, because there's a lot of different steps that need to take place, and a lot of people played a part in this. The actions include the 911 call that was made immediately and identified the location and the door number. If you ever ask why we always have door numbers on all the buildings, it's more than just wayfinding. It speeds up a crisis response, which is so huge in a building that's a million square feet. And this was done quickly and calmly. Staff called for a nurse. The staff grabbed the AED. And when I say they grabbed it, this was not a slow, methodical response. This was a quick, rapid, running response with people coming, running to the aid and bringing that AED that day. The AED was attached. The nurse began chest compressions prior to the AED activation itself. The staff cordoned off the area because we had students who were starting to show up to school, and we had to keep them from the scene. Arriving cars were diverted. Traffic was cleared to aid the first responders coming quicker, and staff stepped out and welcomed the first responders, also to get them to the scene as quickly as they could. Beyond that, staff worked to identify this person so we could notify his HR and notify his family so they could be there at the hospital as soon as they possibly could. So when I say this was a team effort, there was a lot of people who were involved in saving this man's life that day. Ultimately, the shock was given by the AED. But I want to introduce everyone who responded so quickly that day and that large team. So we'll start with Candace Hardy. She's a nursing coordinator for Carmel Clay Schools. Candace, if you could come up. Next would be Katie Overback, Assistant Principal at Carmel High School. Next would be Mike Foal, Instructional Assistant at Carmel High School. Then Valerie Peel, Assistant Principal at Carmel High School. Dr. Tim Ferriss, Principal of Carmel High School. Deb Schrock, Administrative Assistant, Carmel High School. Toby Steele, Assistant Principal, Carmel High School. Kristy Tweedy, School Social Worker, Carmel High School. Skylar Webb, a copy center staff, Carmel High School. Sandy Weisner, Teacher, Carmel High School. Sergeant Troy Smith, Supervisor of the SRO Unit. Ashley Williams, SRO at Carmel High School. Unable to attend today, we have Brad Seaver, Sarah Knope, Brooke Lawson, and Blake Lidle. We're here to begin for this team and what they did that day. And before we move on, I'd like to introduce Kristy Cloud. She's a Director of Technology and Data Solutions at Carmel Clay Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Woodward. Well, it's my extreme pleasure to be here with you tonight, and I'm going to get choked up because back in December, you all introduced me to a very special friend that I never knew I had, and that is Brad Holdcraft, who was at your building that morning. None of us knew who he was and what he was there for, was to fix your printers and your copy center. And since that day, I have been keeping in touch with Brad and his family, and I am so pleased to welcome him and his family here tonight to meet all of you. So please welcome Brad.
If you're wondering where they're going, they're having a little reception back in one of our rooms back here to celebrate and get to know each other a little bit in a much less stressful and a celebrated, a real celebration. So, thank you.
Well, that was just wonderful. I don't know, I'm not sure how to follow up with that with the rest of our sort of boring, some of our, the business boring part of our meeting we have to do. But that was just wonderful, and we are so thankful for the things our staff and teachers do and our SROs. Thank you for everything you do every day. Our next part of our agenda usually is public comment, but we have no one signed up this evening. So next, we have consent. And tonight, the consent includes the personnel report, claims, payroll, gift applications, and the January 13th workshop session, and January 27th regular session, school board minutes. As a reminder to those who are watching, the consent part of our agenda refers to the designated section where routine items are grouped together to be, to efficiently be considered by the board. So our consent item, this evening again, we have our consent agenda, and I'm asking for a motion from the board.
Madam President, I move to approve the consent items 4.1 through 4.7.
Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, Greg. Any discussion on the consent items? Seeing none, we will all take a vote. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next part of our agenda are the action items, and our first action item this evening is the carry forward of operations fund accounts. That is a lot of words. Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. This is a routine annual process that we go through. Essentially, what we're doing is where we have accounts in the operations fund that we want to preserve the funds, this is a process we go through. Otherwise, if we have a purchase order written, for example, that would be considered an encumbrance, and so that carries, you know, the purchase order continues until it's paid, and the money more or less follows the purchase order. These are items where we haven't written a purchase order, but we still have need for the money that it was established for, excuse me, in the first place. So that's what we're doing here.
Thank you, may I have a motion for this carry forward of operations fund accounts?
Madam President, I move to approve the list of operations funds account to be carried forward to 2025.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, and again, our motion is for the carry forward of operations fund accounts. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will take a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Our next action item is the resolution for year-end budget appropriation transfer. Again, Mr. McMichael.
This is another year-end process where within the budget, if we have a particular line item account that is in the red, then we should, we're bringing those to zero. So we're not changing the amount of, it's not an expenditure. We're not changing the amount of money. We're just kind of doing a bookkeeping process so that we don't close out the year with negative balances in any particular line item.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to approve the resolution for year-end budget appropriation transfer?
I move to approve the resolution for the year-end budget transfer appropriation.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chris. So again, we are voting, we're going to be voting to approve the resolution for year-end budget appropriation transfer. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, we will take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have several change orders, and if we would like to be able to consider these all, let's see, we have change orders 5.3, 5.4, 5.5, 5.6, 5.7, and 5.8. And if the board is interested in approving those change orders as a group, we could motion to do so.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to take change order 5.3, 5.4, 5.5, 5.6, 5.7, and 5.8 collectively.
Thank you, Jennifer, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Greg. Any discussion on putting these all together in a group for this, for this motion? Okay, we will all take a vote. All those in favor of voting on items 5.3 through 5.8 on the agenda, voting on them as a group signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Mr. McMichael, can you give us a little background information on each of these change orders?
Yes, you have detailed information in the report, but I'll point out at least two or three of them that, or a couple of them that I want to make comments on. The first is a tennis fencing, and you'll notice that's like $278,000. That, when we bid that project, we did not accept the bid for the fencing because we thought it was too high, and in fact, this price is about half what that price was. So this price, that's why we did that, and that's why you're seeing this as a change. And it is then well within the budget that we had established for that project. And then there's Carmel High School Natory, and that project, the new part is near completion, and this is a whole variety of smaller amounts on that very large project. And beyond that, I respond to questions if you have them.
All right, thank you. May I have a motion to approve these action items?
Madam President, I move to approve change orders 5.3 through 5.8.
Thank you, Chris, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any discussion on these change orders? All right, seeing none, we will take a vote. All in favor of approving items 5.3 through 5.8 on the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. McMichael. Up next, we have a really, I know the board is excited to see this, Staff and Student Services Report. Dr. O'Stryke.
Thank you, and good evening, President Coquelin, Dr. Bearsford, and members of our board. Tonight's Staff and Student Services Report will be shared by Dr. Holly Herrera. She is our Director of Human Resources and does a phenomenal job. And tonight's topic is going to be on stay interviews. And this is a very timely topic for us, number one, because it fits so well with our strategic planning and the board's desire and our desire to gather a lot of feedback and listen to our community as we develop our next strategic plan. But in addition to that, our stay interviews were conducted with specifically our staff members, and as you'll see, a wide variety of our staff members tonight. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Herrera to share with you about Carmel Clay Schools' first-ever stay interviews.
Good evening. So thank you for providing me with the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Super excited to share with you our stay interview process. Approximately a year ago, Dr. O'Stryke had asked that I begin researching state interviews for our district. And at that time, there were a few school districts that were implementing state interviews, and their focus was primarily 20 to 25 employees. What I'm really excited to share with you is that this has been very positive, and we had over 300 employees request to participate in state interviews. So what are state interviews? They're structured conversations between the HR department and current employees. You know, when you think of exit interviews, you think of, you know, that's always at the time where we're talking to employees about why they're leaving or why they've decided to resign. But what we wanted to do with state interviews is really talk with our employees about why are you staying? What are the great things happening in our district? And then what are ways that we can continue to enhance the things that we're already doing so that we can just continue to improve? So looking at the benefits of conducting state interviews, I have several examples here of state interviews, but what we heard time and time again is that our staff was just appreciative, that we were taking the time for them to be heard, and I think that's so important. You know, some of the things we may not be able to change, and some things we can change, but just the fact that we're listening to our employees played an important role in this aspect. And then from an HR department standpoint, you know, we're gathering feedback and really looking at what are the things we're doing well, and then what can we improve upon? So looking at the implementation timeline, we started in the spring of 2024. By the time the fall rolled around, we had communicated to all employees our intentions of implementing state interviews with a random selection process happening in November. And then in January, Dr. O'Stryke and I met with over 61 employees to conduct face-to-face state interviews. So what I want to share with you here is the interest survey we sent out to all staff. So all staff received a survey asking are they interested in participating in state interviews? We had 330 employees want to participate with over 80 comments that we received, and so I just wanted to share a few of those with you. They were just so positive, and so we had such a momentum, you know, with 330 employees, we thought, okay, we can only do so many face-to-face. But what we wanted to do is make sure we captured from all of those employees exactly what their thoughts were. So we not only met with the face-to-face interviews, we sent the others a survey that were not selected with the same questions that we used in the face-to-face interviews so that we could still obtain their data and their feedback. So looking at the selection process, the interview application was open for two weeks. We had 330 responses, and so what I did was go to wheelofnames.com, and what you'll notice here is all of our dog names in here, our therapy dogs. But what we did is we put 330 names in here, and I randomly selected the employees that would participate because we wanted our staff to know upfront, this was a random selection. So in that random selection, we made sure that the demographics showed all employees across all buildings, across EduCare, facilities, food service. We wanted to hear from everyone. When we looked at the 10 administrators we selected, those were DCs, those were APs, those were principals, those were directors. And then we interviewed 21 classified staff, 30 certified, and then everyone not selected received an email with a survey. And from those that received the email, we received 95 responses back from that survey. So when we look at the questions that we focused on, you know, number one was just kind of a comfort question, tell us about yourself, tell us how long you've worked for the district. We had several people share, you know, I started in the cafeteria, and now I'm an IA working in the classroom, or I started as an administrative assistant. And so just hearing their story was great. Number two, we looked at what do they look forward to when they come to work each day? Number three was why do you stay? And then what aspect of their job they wish they could change? And then looking at feedback and recognition. And then number six, I thought was a very unique question, asking people, you know, if they've ever thought about leaving, what prompted it? So really digging into kind of motives and things that we can look at improving. And then number seven, asking people what makes, what we can do to make their job experience better. I think just the look on their face of, wow, you're really asking me this question, you really want to know. And so I think, you know, some people had a response right away, and some people were like, I need time to think about it. And, you know, even after we conducted the interviews, I even received some follow-up emails with, hey, I had more time to think about this, and I kind of want to share this information with you. So it was very productive. So what we did was, you know, as I started looking at the data, I looked for themes, and the themes were consistent between the face-to-face interviews and the surveys. So we compiled that data together. So when we look at what do people look forward to each day, you know, it's the students, it's the families, it's supporting each other, it's the work environment, it's coaching. There were so many positives, and so what I did was take the top 10 things that we saw as themes in both of those. When we look at why do people stay, it's the colleagues, it's the relationship building, it's the awesome resources, EduCare, PTO, feeling valued, being rewarded, the climate and the culture, again, all very, very positive. What aspect of your job do you wish you could change? I do want to highlight a couple things here. With technology, some of our certified staff felt a little bit of frustration with technology. They feel like sometimes there's a different platforms or different things they're having to learn, and sometimes it doesn't always make their job easier. So just looking at different things that we can do in the technology department. And compensation, that was our classified staff, in really looking at what are ways that we can continue to improve and be able to offer higher compensation for our classified staff. And then the other thing is communication and transparency. That comes from the top down, and, you know, a lot of our staff feel that being transparent, so when we're making decisions, that they have an understanding of why decisions are made that impacts them in the classroom. What kind of recognition do you like to receive? This was very interesting. You know, some people wanted just small recognitions or just quiet things, just leave me a no, just give me a pat on the back. They love hearing from kids, from family members, families when they come in, the front office, you know, staff, just that recognition. But what they really pointed out was the celebrations, and the Teacher of the Year Celebration and Support Staff Member of the Year were very big, and that was across the board in the celebrations of those areas. I actually spoke with a Teacher of the Year that had been recognized and a Support Staff Member of the Year that had been recognized, so it was really nice to hear that feedback from them. And then we asked, if you ever thought about leaving, what prompted it? And, you know, number one reason was professional growth, and that's not the same as professional development. With professional growth, it's really looking at advancement. So if you have a teacher that wants to become an assistant principal or an assistant principal that wants to become a principal, we don't always have the openings within our district, so sometimes they have to look outside of the district for that advancement. The second thing being family, you know, those are things that are out of our control. Sometimes you have a spouse that gets a job out of state, people have to move, things happen with, with parents as they get older, and so, you know, that is something that is out of our control. And then the third option being compensation. Again, that goes back to our classified staff of just, you know, looking at what other things that they can do because they feel like sometimes they have to look in other avenues to receive higher pay. So what can I do to make your job experience better? Number one was increased pay and benefits. For our support staff, it was about more paid time off. So if you can't increase my hourly rate, can I receive more paid time off? For monetary educational attainment, this was our certified staff, so looking at, you know, if I'm choosing to get my masters, how can the district support me? With professional growth, something that came up across the board was rewarding staff who stay. So, you know, I heard over and over again, I love my job, I absolutely love what I do, I want a reward to stay. You know, once I am at step six, what is next for me? So can I get more paid time off because I've been here longer? And just rewarding people in that way. With support, direct support in the classroom, we heard from our teachers that they would like to see administrators in the classroom to know more of what is happening, what is going on, and untouched increased planning time. For communication, our staff asked for transparency, so just again, any decisions that are being made that we are transparent in those decisions because they feel like they don't always know why a decision is made. And then enhanced teacher autonomy, talking about curriculum, it's not just autonomy Talking about curriculum, it's not just autonomy and what they teach, but also how they teach it. So both of those came out. So our state interview findings, you know, there are outside factors that are currently impacting public education and, you know, that is someone, something that everyone is acknowledging. You know, there are non-favorable laws that are going to impact state funding. And so, you know, that was acknowledged as well as a supportive work environment. So everything on the left were definite positives. You know, looking at professional growth, we offer our teachers, looking at autonomy, they went on and on about benefits, the wellness center, the fitness club, EduCare. Those are a lot of reasons why people stay. And then just the supportive and effective leadership. On the right-hand side, we looked at improving communication, so what can be done in order for us to improve that? Support staff benefits, asking for more affordable healthcare, health insurance for our ten-month employees and then additional paid time off. Looking at workload, that came from our teachers. So some of that can't be helped, you know, when we look at like mandated science of reading, we all just learned about that. So looking at that workload, that's not something we can change, but just acknowledging that we understand our teachers have a heavy workload. And then professional development, our classified staff gave me a lot of great ideas, which I'm really excited to bring back and really look at how we can implement that for our classified staff. And then our special education staff also mentioned that they would like to see more professional development directly geared towards their needs. So our next steps, we analyzed the data to identify themes. We need to celebrate our successes. There are a lot of things that we're doing well and I think we need to acknowledge that and celebrate that. I will be sharing these findings at our next alt meeting with district leadership and the principals. And then I'm going to take time with each of the buildings and departments to follow up with specific feedback I had from their buildings on things that they can do. So if it's directly related to communication, maybe there was something specific for that building that I can share with them. And then the state interviews are here to stay. So we will continue implementing state interviews. Dr. Ostrom has already made it clear that next year he would still like to participate and, you know, have a group of employees that he meets with. This was very positive and we, we enjoyed every moment of it. So at this time, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Hi. This was great. Super informative and a few questions.
Yes.
I think some of them may come out of your, the next steps.
Sure.
But I'm going to ask them anyway. So I was, I'm interested if you could ascertain a little more from the transparency feedback that staff gave? Is that, is some of that coming from the building level? Is some of that coming from the district level, a combination thereof?
You know, I think it's a combination. It's looking at all levels of communication. So like when new policies come out, you know, even our, when you look at our support staff, they said, you know, when we have new curriculum that's implemented, there is a heavy focus on teachers, but what about us? We support the kids. What are we doing to support us so that we can help them with the new curriculum? So it's just across the board.
Okay. And then I guess one other question around transparency, do you get a sense if it is, how do I say this? Is it the why? Is it they're wanting to understand the rationale behind a decision or wanting to be a part of the decision or a?
I think it could be a little bit of both, but I think more heavily on the why side. And I think a lot of times when people know the why, it takes away that question of transparency.
Great. In terms of sharing the findings with leadership, building level, correct to assume that the feedback, the way that people like to hear feedback, that will be shared with building leadership so that people's principals, building leadership can then direct that feedback accordingly to the staff that they're supervising on a day-to-day basis?
Absolutely.
Awesome.
Yeah.
And then last question or comment, assume some of the next steps internally and sort of down the road is to look at, on the benefit side of things, knowing that there's limited resources and we have to get creative, but are there creative ways for us to look at PTO, flex time? How do we try and do more with less in terms of presenting different options to our staff? Because they've clearly outlined they understand.
Sure.
Right? There's only so much we can do with cost savings and offering concrete health benefit plans, but hey, we'd be willing to consider.
Right. And I think this goes back to me sharing with district leadership. I've not had a chance to actually sit down with Roger or anyone else that this would impact, to have those conversations about what that feedback was and what we can look, look at doing in the future.
Great. Yeah. But I think certainly, it sounds like from the staff side of things, they certainly understand that there's a, a little bit of give and take in there. And so if they're willing to be creative on their side, I think there's opportunity for us to look at that also. So awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's really incredible to see how much pride this staff takes in the job that they're doing. And certainly we all recognize, as does the community, how, what a difficult job it is. And everyone seems so, has such a realistic view of the time that it takes to provide these types of services to the kids in our community. So it was interesting just to see that they understood the time commitment and they were willing to put in the time, they just wanted to be recognized. And I mean, it's just, it seems like the information that was gleaned was, everyone has a very realistic view of what it takes to provide such a wonderful education to our students.
And I think over and over again, you know, we just heard the sense of community. People that were, you know, raised here, that wanted to give back, that have their children in the school district and so it's important for them. And so just that sense of community and just pride in what they do every day. It doesn't matter if they're working in the cafeteria, they're in EduCare, they're a classroom teacher, they're an administrator, just that pride in what they do.
Dr. Herrera, thank you so much. I'm wondering if you had any concerns expressed by our staff about confidentiality or will what I say be attributed to me? And how did you answer those concerns?
You know, I started out with all face-to-face interviews, letting them know that this was confidential information. It's not about, you know, saying someone's name or sharing someone's name with administration. We made that very clear in all communication that went out to our employees, even when they completed the survey, that it was completely confidential. And, you know, really, that's not, that's not important. It's not important who said it. It's more about the feedback that we're, you know, getting so that we can, we can look at, you know, ways to improve.
That's wonderful and I agree a hundred percent. And then I'm just wondering if there was anything you heard that surprised you or keeps you up at night or you think it would be important for us as a board to be aware of?
You know, not at all. Honestly, as someone that is fairly newer to the district, only being my second year here, it just reaffirmed why I'm here and why I stay. And it's just the community, it's just the sense of belonging, the trust that people have in you every day to come in and do your job and they just trust you to do it and they know you're going to do it well. And just the high level that people in this district are performing at every single day and it makes a difference.
It sure does. Thank you so much.
Thank you for the presentation. It was really insightful. I'm glad you're doing that. And it just, it builds trust in any organization. So have that communication like they're, very good thing to be doing. I just have one question on the, you expressed a couple of times that the classified staff was, had concerns with compensation. Do you feel generally speaking, across the board, we're competitive with local districts, other local districts? Or do we have some problem areas we need to look at?
You know, I think that that would take a little bit more in-depth analysis to really look at where we are across the board with other districts. I think right now, you know, the biggest thing is keeping up with inflation is what we just continue to hear. How are we keeping up with inflation? And so, you know, it may take a deep dive for us to look into that more.
President Koke, before you have the opportunity to say anything, I just wanted to thank Dr. Herrera. Yes, we, I did task her to move forward with this, but her level of organization and communication and research that she provided on this project was just tremendous. And I will say, I, you know, as part of, I don't know, about twenty or thirty of the interviews as part of this, and this was one of the most meaningful and positive initiatives that I've been a part of in a long time. And the fact that when I participated in it and I asked the question at the end, what can I do to improve, you know, your, your role here in the district? And then a lot of times I got a pause and they said, well, you really can improve what I do here. And it was just a great dialogue in, you know, that, you know, both in Dr. Herrera's role and my role, that sitting face-to-face with employees, it's so much more meaningful than at the end of an exit interview when they've already made the decision to go. This has provided us with such rich data to take a look at and feedback that not only are we going to act upon the feedback and data we received this year, but this will be ongoing. And I look forward to being part of this in future years as well because it was just wonderful sitting down one-on-one with our teachers, administrators, classified staff from all over. And I just wanted to say that we will continue this and a special thank you to Dr. Herrera.
Thank you.
This was just really impressive. I think this is one way to set our staff apart, help them understand that they, they're, they can be heard. And, you know, again, not just when they're, when they're leaving for those exit, but for the state interviews to be heard every year. The only question I had is I, I had a question about if you were going to continue these, but you answered that. Will you be able to have the capacity to increase the number of interviews in the future, do you think, or not?
So I think that's definitely on the table for us to look at. You know, we, we had not anticipated when we first started, you know, we, we were thinking small, you know, thirty people and then we had this overwhelming number of people who wanted to participate. So with us doing it, starting out next year, we've already been through the process. We can have a lengthier timeline of getting them done and be able to probably do some in the fall and in the spring.
Yeah. And just to reiterate what Dr. Herrera shared, we, there's only been a small handful of districts that have done state interviews across the state through our research and talking with a lot of districts. All of them said they received about twenty to twenty-five responses, something like that. And for us to get three hundred and thirty, it was amazing. And it just shows, I think, Mr. Brown, you shared, the level of trust our staff has to want to share with us. We think that's fantastic. So Mr. McMichael, the exec team may be going out and doing a few more of the state interviews next year so that we can increase that total, but we'll, we'll take a look at that.
I like that idea as well. I think just to get, get an idea of what people are saying. Well, thank you so much, Dr. Herrera. This was wonderful.
Thank you.
Okay, pause with the financial update. Mr. Shapiro is going to give us a Carmel Clay Parks Department report.
And Roger did want me to clarify that it's not him.
Yeah.
No problem.
It's not calling either.
We're flexible here. So I was able to attend the Carmel Clay Parks Board Meeting earlier this month. I unfortunately couldn't go in January, I was out of town. But there are some exciting things going on, just wanted to share. I think they'll be beneficial to our CCS families. One, if you weren't aware, summer programming registration is open. So people, if you're still looking for summer plans for your children, you should check out what's going on at the Carmel Parks. Lots of great summer options. There is a new addition coming to the Monon, a new indoor play space. It's called Amazing Airways. It's an indoor STEM-based playground. I think it's getting installed in March. It looks super cool. Multiple children could be on it at the same time. It's all science and technology-based. So that'll be exciting. A couple of other things that I found to be really interesting, so River Heritage Park, which is River Road, just north of one hundred and sixteenth street. The park, the Parks Department became aware of a piece of property that abuts the park property that is privately owned. And they were made aware that that property, the owner was interested in selling the property. It's about three acres. So the Parks Department is purchasing the land. On that land, though, is one of the oldest homes in Carmel. It's a piece of property, the home was built in eighteen twenty-seven. So the Parks Department is purchasing the property and they'll be doing some work on that cottage and some other small pieces of buildings that are on the land and using it for some park programming, including summer camp programming, potentially some after-school programming, things like that. So more to come there. I just thought historically, it was super cool that there is a house that was built in eighteen twenty-seven on that property that is now going to be part of our Parks Department. And then lastly, if you might recall, there's a new park coming to Carmel, Bear Creek Park on the northwest side of the city. West Park used to be the only park on the west side, but Bear Creek Park is coming. So that's Shelbourne Road, just south of one hundred forty-sixth Street. And so there has been some progress there. The Parks Department has engaged with a firm to begin the design phase and that'll include talking with some community members in that part of the city to start to gather some feedback and begin some initial design and planning. So those things all came out of this most recent Parks Board Meeting, so that's some exciting stuff. So we'll start to see some progress there. So more to come with some more future meetings, but as the weather starts to turn, you know, let's make sure we're taking advantage of the great park system we have here in the city.
Thank you, Mr. Shapiro. Yes, I agree. The Parks Board is a really fun board to be on to see what, what is up and coming in our city. I believe Mr. McMichael is ready.
I am.
Yes, all right. And so now we have the monthly financial update.
Yes, we do. So this is just the first month, as you know, so we're just getting started for this calendar year, which is also our budget year. And so I'll start with the Education Operating Referendum and the Rainy Day Funds. And you'll see in total, we ended, ended the month with eleven point seven million-dollar cash balance. You know, we started at almost seventeen million. The reason it's declined as much as it did is because January happens to be a three-pay month and for the, these funds, that approximates almost five million dollars. So you'll see that, you know, it last, there's two of them a year. So last year, it was in March and sometime in the fall, maybe September. So, so that is, explains why that's changed. And you'll see here, it was fourteen million, but if you adjust for the three pays, we're actually up almost two million dollars from, from last year. And which is, you know, that's not changed either in the sense of if you look at, you know, December and so forth, we've, we've increased the total cash reserves. We're alm, you know, you may remember, we had discussion about having, establishing our minimum balance of reserves, and I want to emphasize minimum, not maximum, of twelve percent. And so this is about twelve percent. And I'd like to see it get to about fifteen to eighteen percent. Standard and Poor's would be more liberal than that. They'd like to get it to between fifteen and twenty percent. And that does have an impact potentially on our bond rating. That's one of the things they look at and consider. We have a very high rating, but, but of course, I would, wouldn't mind if it went even higher, because that has implications on interest rates. And given the amount of, of bonds and so forth, you know, that rating is meaningful in terms of what the potential could be. Going to the Operations Fund, don't know why they blew things there. Wasn't supposed to be. But, so here we have, same thing with the three pays, but you, this one's not as comparable, but, but we have, we have January ending at 1.8, and then last year it was 1.4. And so, it's actually up even with the three pays. But again, this is the fund that has various renovation projects or maintenance and so forth, so it's not as comparable from one year to the next. And then finally, our Rainy Day Fund, we have 7.5 million in that fund, and last year we had 4.6. The Rainy Day Fund is primarily the, the way we're able to, are, are increasing our overall reserves in these three funds, because again, standards and poor's perspective, and mine as well, the, the three funds can actually be used for very similar purposes. And the Rainy Day Fund really is a rainy day fund, that we don't intend to spend that money regularly. It does become a part of, of reserves. And, and if we have, and we have had in the past, unforeseen condition, when the, when the Great Recession hit, for example, we, we received millions of dollars less, less money that had already been approved to receive. And, and in the middle of the year, so we had, you know, teachers under contract and so forth, and the money just wasn't gonna show up, 'cause they didn't have it. And so, we had to, you know, that, had to manage that. And so, having a, a certain amount of reserves is, is a responsible thing. I sometimes put it in a sense of months, about 8% is one-month expenditures. And if you, whether you think at home or other businesses and so forth, that 12% then to have a month and a half doesn't seem unreasonable to me to, to cover those kinds of unforeseen, and, and considering the type of organization we are, we have lots of people under contract, most of our monies and salaries. If anything does happen unexpectedly, good thing to have reserves, so. Any rate, that's, concludes my report. I'll respond to questions if you have.
Oh, it looks like no questions.
Yep.
All right, I have, well, I'll keep it short. I have a legislative update, and if you, if anyone's been paying attention to the legislature, they've been quite busy with their school and education-related bills. I'm just gonna share a couple that have passed their respective places and are moving on. Senate Bill 518 passed the Senate, and that is one, so that will go on to the House when they, when they resume next week. And that one is with regards to public schools needing, sharing property tax revenue with certain charter schools. Senate Bill 482 also passed. There was a similar House bill, House Bill 1201, that was education matters. That one didn't move, and so I'm guessing that was because the Senate bill moved on, and that was regarding absenteeism. And if anyone recalls, there was a similar bill passed last year with regards to absenteeism, and really trying to get, I think, under control mostly in the secondary schools. So, this was, I think, cleaning up a little bit of the language in that. House Bill 1500 passed. I was there when this passed last, last week. I was able to be down at the State House on Tuesday, most of the day, talking to and listening to legislators. This House Bill 1500 has to do with teacher appreciation grants. Right now, there are grants given for three categories. Can you remind me, there?
It's categories of highly effective and effective amongst our teachers.
Yes, yes. So, this bill did pass the House. This is looking to change that, and to making it such that each school district would need to apply for the grants for the teachers, and then the grant amounts would need to be added within the salary schedule that we have for teachers. So, we'll look to that when it moves to the Senate, when they reconvene. House Bill 1, or 1002 is various education matters. This is, a lot of it, they, they call this downtown the deregulation bill, is what they like to call it. We are hoping to get GAAP or accrual accounting added to that. And I save the best for last. The Senate Bill 1 and House Bill 1001, these are basically the House and the Senate's version of budgets. I would really love our legislators to maybe have access to the stay interview information that we learned from our teachers, because, you know, when I hear that the teachers and staff want, would love to have an increase in pay and benefits and help, you know, keeping up with inflation, with looking at the current budget bills, that is looking like not much of a possibility. So, it would be great if you're contacting your House and Senate legislators and letting them know that we do not want reductions to the monies that our schools receive. You know, we love our schools, we love Carmel, and we want to continue the excellence that we, we already have, but, you know, we need to not see a reduction in funding. That is my legislative report. Next up, we have Dr. Bearsford with the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. And so, just to tag off of Roger and your reports, there's a storm that's brewing, and we may have a big rainy day if we don't have some changes in the property tax bill, which is Senate Bill 1, where Carmel Clay is set to lose about $9.4 million over the next three years, with the reoccurring loss after that other year, unless something changes. Also, House Bill 1001 that you mentioned, that one got a little better than it was the, the first round, but still has some issues, so we're monitoring that as well. You know, there's approximately $180 million set aside for education, and I think traditional public schools like ours, there's only about 41% of that, that money is going to traditional public schools, which serve around 90% of the students in Indiana. So, there's some, some things there that I, I hope that they'll be taking a look at as the, the bills swap House and Senate, and hopefully it will have a brighter, a brighter version as we, we move forward through this process. So, I throw that out there just for, you know, you know, we always, you always, you know, talk about ours, so we just gave you some comments on your, your reports. So, there we go. Tonight, I'm representing the Falcons of Forest Dale Elementary School, and unfortunately, and I hate to do this to you, but I do not have any swag from FTE, but wait, not so fast, my friends. I do have a little something. I'm not sure if our principals are getting a little more competitive, or, you know, I still have a few to go, so I'm a little worried about what's next. I feel like I've got, like, Falcon dust in my hair now, or what we're, my hair would be. All right, so with that, I want to do a special shout-out to Principal Sarah Inskeep and Assistant Principal Natalie Deitch for their incredible leadership, along with their amazing staff, parents, and of course, the respectful, responsible, trustworthy, and talented students who walk the halls of every day at Forest Dale Elementary. A Carmel clap for the Falcon Nation of Forest Dale Elementary School. And for a small group, we are mighty. That was fantastic. Tonight, I'm gonna start with my bell ringers. So, that's a little switch-up, keep you on your toes, and I actually have two. One, is I attended the Girls' State Swimming and Diving Championships last Saturday. The Greyhounds won all three relays, just dominated the state meet once again, and I believe it was the third or fourth highest-winning total score in state history. So, now the streak continues. That was the 39th state title in a row, and I was both sad and relieved about the victory. So, I'll explain that. I was sad, because it's my final year of going to the Girls' State Swim Meet as a superintendent of Carmel Clay Schools. Now, I was relieved, because the streak did not get broken on my watch. So, now it moves over to another superintendent, and, you know, I think, I've charged Dr. Ostrich to, to make sure that streak continues to 11 more years, so that we get to 50 in a row. But, those kids work so hard, and it all comes down to that one day for the high school competition, and they, they just go there, and they're just the most joyous athletes that you'll ever see, because they're just pulling for one another, and they've worked hard, and it's their time to shine, and they took really good advantage of that. Boys' State Swimming and Diving Championship is this Saturday, and the, the Greyhounds will be trying for number 11 in a row in, in the boys' meet. So, best of luck to those guys. If they don't need it, just work hard and, and let it rip, and I'm sure we'll, we'll be okay. Second bell ringer is the Carmel High School Dance Marathon for Riley's Children's Hospital. And so, I attended the big reveal last night. It was well past the old man's bedtime. This is almost 11 o'clock. But our students raised $412,605.82 for Carmel's, for the Riley Children's Hospital. And they do that over an entire year. They, they go and do that fundraiser. It's gotta be, if not the largest, one of the largest fundraisers in high schools, in high schools in the country. But, not so fast. I learned from Andrea Golnick, who is the sponsor for the dance marathon, from the school, school staff member, that this morning, after sleeping probably 17 hours on Sunday, this morning she got a check for $1,250. So, now the total is $413,855.82. And so, just an amazing amount, but what's priceless is the lessons in working hard for a good cause, loving others, especially kids. So proud of our students, our staff, our parents, the community that makes this happen every single year. So, it's pretty amazing. So, started off with two bell ringers. Also, I wanted to shout-out to Senior Michael Major, who was the runner-up in the 165 Division of the Wrestling, State Wrestling Tournament. He had an outstanding career here, he's senior, and, and he just brought his way all the way to the, to the top, and, and came up just a little bit short, but real proud of his effort. Now, I've got a few just reminders for the community. Our teacher recruitment fairs, we have two of them in March. March 5th will be right here at Carmel Clay Schools, and on March 12th, that teacher recruitment fair will be at Noblesville in their community center. They've got right there next to the football field. So, tis the season, so Dr. Herrera and Dr. Ostrich will be out looking for superstars and try to get them to join the Carmel Clay family here. Another upcoming event is the Community Strategic Plan Forum and Listening Session. That was, would be on February 27th and March 20th, 6:00 p.m., right here in this room, in these chairs. And so, it's not too late to sign up. I think, what'd you say, we have a, how many people already?
I think we have over 65 at this time, and that number can be growing. So, we're excited to welcome everyone here on Thursday.
So, much like the stay interviews, this is a big chance for community members to come and, and give us some feedback, let us gather some data, and help us, you know, form up that next strategic plan. And then, one of my favorites, I mean, you really wanna have a good time. The robot reveal for the Carmel High School Tech Hounds is tomorrow, from 5:30 to 7:30. And this is when they reveal, you know, their bot that's gonna do the, this year's season of competition. And hopefully, they'll get all the way up to the Worlds, like they've done in the past. So, really, really nice. And then, last one, of course, is March the 7th, is Taste of Carmel. And that's our Carmel Foundation puts on that fundraiser, and it is always amazing. And I heard there is a super-special CCS employee that will be helping emcee the event. And I'm not gonna mention any names, but I heard somebody we, we all know. So, again, Friday, March the 7th, get your tickets and, and enjoy a really good night of food and fellowship. And that is my report for today. Thank you.
I think that was the best report with the Falcon head. I don't know how we're gonna.
I'm getting a little, I'm getting a little nervous, 'cause I've got about eight of these to go, and I just don't know where it's gonna go.
All right, thank you, Dr. Bearsford. Our announcements tonight include our next upcoming meetings. March 10th is our School Board Workshop session. March 24th is our School Board Regular Session. Spring break, oh, it's only about five weeks away, April 4th through April 11th. And then, our School Board Workshop session, April 15th after that. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Greg. Meeting adjourned.